The pandemic has made everything harder, but AARP is fighting to protect Americans 50-plus by giving you the information you need to vote safely. Learn more about your voting options and make your voice heard.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. My name is Kylie McCormick, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters, it is my honor to welcome you all to the 2020 Natrona County School Board Candidate Forum. I want to thank you all for being here this evening, and I want to thank our candidates for participating and giving us this process, being able to be informed when we go to the polls. The League of Women -- This event is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters and the Natrona County Library. We give a huge thank you to Betsy O'Neal and Jim Brown, who helped to organize this event and coordinate with our candidates and put this on. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920. Our Casper chapter started around 1950, and since then, we have been working to empower voters by encouraging active and informed participation in government, by increasing public understanding of public policy issues, and influencing policy through education and advocacy. We are a nonpartisan group with deep roots in the history of woman suffrage in the United States. And as we are all well aware in Wyoming, the fight for woman suffrage was not done by women alone. There were many brave, eloquent men who fought for women's suffrage, especially in Wyoming. And because of that, the League of Women Voters, our membership, is open to everyone 16 years and older. And I'm very quite -- I'm quite proud to say that our local chapter has several men involved in it who are the lifeblood of our chapter. So I really do want to encourage you all today. I thank you all for coming to be involved and informed voters. I want to encourage you to take that next step and maybe consider joining the League of Women Voters. We've got a pamphlet in the back there where you can see how to sign up for membership and take that next step of letting your voice be heard in a nonpartisan way. We also have in the back an information packet on who our representatives are in Natrona County, and this is very helpful for everyone who is interested in having their say in our government. And with that, I will be happy to introduce our moderators, who will get this evening started. We have Beth Worthen and Joanne Truitt. Thank you both very much.
Thank you so much, Kylie. And thanks to the League of Women Voters and the Natrona County Library for hosting tonight's candidate forum. Just a few things before we get started about school board and school board candidates. And then I wanted to also talk a little bit about tonight's forum. So just a reminder, there are five seats that are open on the school board. The school board is a nonpartisan board, and there are six candidates that will be on the ballot. The term for school board is four years. So tonight, the format is that each candidate, starting with Ms. Alvy here on this side of the room, each candidate will give an intro statement. They'll each have one minute to give their intro statement, and Joanne will read exactly what they should cover in that intro statement. And then we'll go into questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. Because we started with Kyla here at the end, the second question or the next question will go to Raymond, and then we'll proceed in that order just down the table. Just to give everyone the chance to sort of have that first, take that first stab at these questions. Again, the time limit is one minute for each question. The timekeeper is Betsy O'Neal right over here, and she will have a yellow and a red flag to indicate the halfway point is yellow. And then, of course, the stopping point is red. And we know that each of the candidates will respect their time. Not going to even talk about what happened this week. Again, there will be a question rotation according to the order that you're seated in. Now, these questions were prepared by the League of Women Voters and Joanna and myself. You can play a role in tonight's candidate forum as well. So please feel free to submit questions. There are pens and paper available in the foyer, and you can bring your questions to the timekeeper, and she will pass it to us, and we will try to get to as many questions as we can. So with that, we're going to open things up and turn things over to Joanne.
Okay. Ms. Alvy, you're up first. The question I've got for all of you is: Candidate self-intro. What motivates you to become, to want to become a Natrona County School District Board member? What attributes are essential for successful school board members? And what quality would you bring to the board to make it successful? And as a reminder, if you get down the way and need me to repeat it, please just ask, and then we'll start the time as soon as you're -- as soon as I read it.
Thank you. My interest in school board is that I do have three small children, and I have always loved the school district. I have loved the teachers that have put in all the time and effort for our children. I've got the other question already.
Oh, attribute.
Yeah, attribute.
I apologize.
Yeah, and then what qualities will you bring to make it successful? I believe that a good school board member has to be good at listening, very understanding, and I do think they have to be a really good team player. I'm a really good listener. I do believe that I take a lot of time to try to understand things also. So I think that's a good attribute that we have to see all sides and be able to understand all points of views.
Okay, great. Same question.
Okay. Is that working? Yes, okay. I'm excited to be on the school board because my experience over the last four and a half years has been one of just learning as much as I possibly could about the board and everything that the Board of Trustees does. And it's an amazing amount of work, and it's not anything like I thought it was going to be four and a half years ago. I have an analytical problem-solving kind of a mind, and I think that bringing that to the table, we're lucky right now that there's a couple engineers. I consider it lucky, other people probably don't. But there's a couple engineers on the board right now that bring that analytical problem-solving mind to the board, and I think that's very helpful. Just not just right now with the current issues that are in front of the board, but anytime, any problem that arises, I think that that mindset helps. I'm also excited because we have a very good makeup to the board right now, and I think that the board has been able to put differences aside to do things for the benefit of our students.
Okay, same question, Ms. Alvy.
All righty. Do I have to push this button, or is it on?
Go ahead and push it until it lights up green.
Okay. Ah, okay. And then I got to be careful not to yell. Okay. I'm running for my third term on the board, and I have to tell you that when I first started, I grew up in this district, and I've always thought it was one of the best districts around. I got a great education here. And then I came and taught here, and I was at Kenley Ross for 28 years. And I kind of think that being in education is not just a career, it's a lifestyle, and so -- or a way of life. And so when I wasn't teaching anymore, I wanted to find some ways to be involved, and there were a few things that were bothering me back then. And it took me probably the first four years to learn a whole lot about how things worked and what needed to go on. And then the second term was a whole lot better. I think I'm also a good listener. I do think that it takes me a long time to process sometimes, too. But I try very hard to answer anybody who contacts me, and I will for sure keep doing that.
So I recently graduated from BYU. Utah's great, but nothing beats Casper. I'm glad I'm alive, and I were able to come back and find a job. And all that time, I realized I want to make sure that Casper is great. And I always knew that, that, you know, this is my hometown. I want to make sure it's something that we can all be happy about. And I realized that one of the best places is with our kids. You know, obviously, I'll be having one here in about 19 days, depending on when he decides he wants to pop out. And so that's kind of my interest in the school board, of just being able to give back. And why I say that is because I feel like the attribute that most goes with it is altruistic. And I can tell that everyone on this board, if they weren't altruistic, they probably wouldn't be trying to run to help, because that's the big thing with school boards, you're trying to help kids and give them a better future.
Good evening. And again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the library. So this is my fourth time seeking a term as a Natrona County trustee. And at this point in time, I think I decided to go one more time. You know, we absolutely have stellar facilities, and there's no doubt about that. And as times are changing, I -- my concentration right now is to make sure that we have great academics and our students are achieving. So that was my real push to get into it, to go for another four years. I want to work to make sure our students are getting all the correct classes and what they need to be successful if they choose to go to the workforce or the military or into college. So that's my reasons right now. And I think the attributes for a good board member have been stated before, and probably listening and taking time to research and talk to other people so we get --
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Your time is up.
My time is up.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Our next question is, and this goes to Mr. Cavaliere, and then it goes down the row and back to Ms. Alvy. Describe your participation in district and community activities, boards, and committees. How has this prepared you to be an effective member on the school board?
Okay. So as a school board member, I've been on the board, obviously, but also a member of the Natrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board, which gives money to various recreational opportunities in the county for students and their families. I've also been on the Board Budget Committee and the leader of that committee for the last two budget cycles. Through my professional work, I'm the engineer for the town of Bar Nun, which is a very public position, I should say, and then also the town of Len Rock. So I've been able to be involved in both of those communities. Then through kids, various kid things, sports and activities, I've also been involved through soccer, school, other activities like that, and then various church organizations. So I think that has been my work, and how does that help me? I think being around and seeking different people's opinions has helped.
I haven't been on the board for eight years now. I've been on quite a few committees. I'm currently a member of the BOSIS Committee, Board of Cooperative Educational Services. And they, among other things, give grants to special projects for that benefit, both the district and the Casper College. I'm also on -- I'm a chair of the Policy Board, which is sometimes a really mixed blessing because we've had quality policies to work on lately. But we get a lot of good input from that. I was also on the Construction Committee when we were building the new buildings. And everyone is on the Board Budget Committee. And I really needed that one to learn what the heck was going on with the money all this time. So the other thing is, I'm on an advisory board called Parents as Teachers. And these are people that go into the community and help parents figure out how to help their children learn from the get-go. Okay?
So before attending BYU, I was actually at Casper College, and that's actually where I'm currently at, as the Marketing Coordinator. While attending Casper College, I was a senator for Student Senate. So I understand the ins and outs of needing to look policies, agenda minutes, agenda for minutes. I was in the leadership for, actually, the newest organization that we had created there, the National Society of Leadership and Success. I also helped bring a nonprofit there called Campus Kitchen Casper College, which is now actually the Food Recovery Network, which that still makes me happy and still going. And then also, I was the president of the Latter Day Saints Student Association. So being involved is something that I really love. And also, just with working at Casper College, I have the best interest in our students coming up and making sure that, one, they're prepared and looking for some sort of secondary education, because I know colleges are for everyone, but even having a certificate in welding is something advantageous to anybody.
Thank you. So like the others who serve on the school board now, we do serve on a lot of committees, and I do sit on the Natrona County Joint Powers Board, or the Red Board, the Budget Board, the Academic Steering Policy. I did serve six years on the Natrona County Library Board. Currently, I'm Secretary of the Blue Envelope Path Board. And I can't -- I don't know if you're aware of that one, but, you know, we have web funds, and we help and we give to the people in this community when they have a need with some housing. And probably one that you don't hear about a lot, did you give me red? Yellow? It's bulbs. And bulbs stands for bulbs those ladies buy. So all the tulips and the daffodils you see around the town, we have planted through the years. So those are things I've done in the community. Thank you.
For the past four years, I have actually served on my children's, their elementary schools' PTA, and I've led every minute of it. I actually am currently a board member also for the Greater Wyoming Council, for the Boy Scouts of America here in Casper. I, too, like Ray, have done several youth programs I've worked with through my church. I've worked through elementary-age children, and then right now, I currently serve with the youth program of our church. And I have also coached some club soccer here and there also. So those all help me be around a lot of children, talk to them lots, find out their needs.
Okay, wonderful. Our next question will be for Ms. Howie. What are the -- Starting with Ms. Howie, excuse me. What are the three top agenda items for the upcoming school year that the school board should focus on?
Well, the current focus right now, I think, is we got kids into school. Now we want to keep them there, and we want to keep them safe. And that is one of our biggest priorities right now, probably the biggest priority. And it's so far so good, you guys. And then the second thing is going to be the budget, I think. We are going to -- We are all right for this year, but who knows what will happen when the legislature's through? So that's the other thing. And the third thing for me, and I hope for the board, is just to work very hard for all of our staff and make sure that things are going well for them. Teachers have a hard job right now, even harder than usual. And I just want to make sure that teachers and students are all okay.
So I would agree with Ms. Howie. COVID-19, so now there is some safety and health for our students is top priority of what we need to focus on. Second would be budget, especially with -- I know we are -- We put away about $500,000 a year with -- I think this year was the first time in a while we hadn't done that for Natrona County School District. And so, you know, we have that in its day, but depending on how the legislature goes, hopefully, we can continue to put some money away, which I am all for. And of course, the third thing is to make sure to focus on our strategic plan, specifically with graduation. I mean, this is an abnormal year. We want to make sure that our kids are still progressing, they're still learning. And yes, it's a different environment, but hopefully, still obtaining the education that they want and need and deserve.
Well, I think first and foremost for me is the student growth and achievement. And I think that is my top priority, along with safety, safe and healthy place for our students. And I'm really proud that we have the SROs that we do have in our school facility. Budget is also huge. We may be facing more cuts with -- From the legislature, and we have handled those really well by keeping them mostly as far away from the student as we can. And I do want to make sure that our teachers have the resources that they need so they can properly prepare our teachers. This is really fascinating. Man, I almost like to talk.
I agree with those top three agendas from pretty much everybody. I actually have been working on that question and thought the same -- the same thing, sorry, that it's important that we keep our teachers and kids safe and keep schools open, because I think that that's where the kids obviously want and need to be. And then as basically my third agenda item, I would like to keep the curriculum going, good curriculum for the students, have them be engaged, and, you know, want to be in school, obviously.
I'm going to stick with the same theme as everyone else. My number-one priority is the budget crisis. I think that's probably a little bit different. That's because of my role on the Budget Committee. But, you know, that's going to be huge for not just this year, but many years to come. I think that we're going to be feeling this budget crunch for quite a while. Obviously, the COVID-19 fallouts and everything that comes with it is going to be at the forefront of everyone's minds through this school year, and hopefully, not too much farther beyond that. But I'd also, I'd say, and I think this is always on the forefront of our mind, even though we might not say it, is the increasing student learning and just increasing opportunities for student learning. I think those are the three things that will be very important this year.
Okay, thank you. So let's dive a little bit more into the budget question. Given the concerning financial progression projections from the state and the need to reevaluate spending on K-12 education, what would you prioritize? And what would you eliminate? Starting with Mr. Meyer.
I would make sure to prioritize that our teachers are making sure that they're benefited well. I know that, obviously, if we're not going to have -- If we have kids in there, we're going to need teachers and qualified teachers. And so a great way to especially bring in those top qualified teachers are to have, you know, things that are going to attract them. And obviously, to make sure that our facilities are maintained. I know, thanks to Mr. Kevin Christoperson, that Natrona County is getting a new pool after having the first indoor pool in Wyoming from the side of that, correct that?
Thank you. And again, I guess my top priority is when we're thinking about budgets and cuts, primarily to focus on our student learning. I also think a second would be compensation for our teachers. Our teachers and educators, all of our staff, are doing far more than they've ever had to do before. Maintaining facilities is huge, and that's one thing that we also have to be sure that we maintain. We have stellar facilities now, and it's important. But I think compensation for our staff and teachers, they're working really hard, and keeping a focus on student learning.
You can talk about what you want to eliminate. Remember, there are two parts to this question. What would you prioritize and what would you eliminate?
What would I eliminate on a budget? Well, that's a tough one, and I've thought about it, and I'm going to have to talk fast. But I think that we begin to look for budget cuts. What we will do, we will go to our employers, and we will ask them, how can you help us? And what ways can we cut that out? As far as -- I do not want to eliminate PE. I don't want to eliminate art. I don't want to eliminate all of those programs. So another way, just to keep them away from students.
I agree with what has been said. Those are some great things. I would make sure that we would definitely want to make sure that our teachers are well taken care of, especially because they're the ones providing the programs, you know, for those children. And then top-notch facilities. I don't know what would be eliminated either. That would be super tough, but I would happily support any measure that would stabilize our financial problem.
Again, I'm going to agree with everyone. I think that there's going to be a lot of increased efficiencies throughout the district. I think that's going to be the number-one way that we reduce our budget. I don't think there's any kind of silver bullets that's the one thing that we're going to eliminate that's going to solve the budget problem. And I don't -- I don't think that eliminating anything necessarily is the path that will be very effective for us. Obviously, I think attracting and retaining quality professionals is critical to the future of the district, be it teachers, support staff, everything. If we skimmed there, then our students are going to pay for it down the road. And I think, was that the red one or the yellow one? Okay. That's all that I have for that one.
Well, I absolutely agree with what everyone has said. I want any cuts that we make to stay as far away from the students as possible. I also want to make sure that the staff is all right. We kind of were in this country before, a few years ago, and the efficiencies that we manage through this district, thanks to everybody in the district, were amazing and helped put us in a good position for, at least for this year. So I agree. I can't think of one single thing to eliminate. I can just see cuts in a lot of places, but a lot of times, it's the staff that will tell you what they can do without so that we can be better off.
Okay, next question. We're going to start with Ms. Walsh. What are your thoughts on the current policy of COVID-19 as far as Natrona County School District policy is concerned? Do you believe that the virtual learning program is as effective as in-person instruction? And if not, do you have suggestions on how to improve it?
Well, that's a huge one. And I believe as we entered into this school year, I -- there was a lot of thought, a lot of research was done. And I think we entered it the best that we could. Do I believe that virtual learning is good as in-person or in our broken water? No, I do not. And there have been some glitches along the way. We have worked hard to identify those and make corrections. It's taken some time. I think we started out with the best that we could with the knowledge that we know, is it perfect? It is not perfect. And we are not going to know for maybe a year if what we have done is okay.
I'm excited for this question. As a mother, not as, you know, a board member, just from the outside perspective, I think that the board did an amazing job. Basically, the ability to open school back up the way they did with the information that they had, making it possible for students to return. I think that was huge, and they put a lot of things in place that have made it incredibly easy for kids to return. I think that was huge and they put a lot of things in place that have made it incredibly easy for kids to return. I did not opt as a parent to do virtual learning, so I don't know much about that program. But again, I mean, how amazing that they were able to throw that together within the summer, get together with teachers and make that possible that students that didn't choose. I don't actually know the numbers except for what the paper has reported, but there were over 1,200 students that didn't choose to go back and chose to do virtual learning. And like she said, there might have been some glitches, but it's been accessible to all the students to have all the equipment they needed and that's pretty amazing.
I'll agree with what's been said, that the virtual learning is not as effective as in-person learning right now. And it's not for lack of trying. I know we have a lot of dedicated professionals that are working tirelessly to get there. But we went from under 100 students to almost 1,000, 1,000 students in three months. And I think it was significantly higher than anybody expected it to be. So to get to where we are right now was just, it was a huge undertaking. And I think that, I, it's kudos to everyone involved because it was, it was just a massive program to try to get underway. And I think that they've done an exceptional job. It's not where we want to be and I don't think it will be where we are today in two weeks. And two weeks after that, I think it's just going to get exponentially better. Luckily, I think that we have very resilient children and, you know, they're going to be able to overcome some of the problems that will arise from what has happened over the last six or seven months. So I'm, I'm excited because I know that we are working hard and everyone wants what's best for kids.
Well, I know how excited my granddaughter was to go back to school. And she is willing to do whatever's necessary to be there, including wear a mask all the time. She wanted to be able to do her choir and do her drama and all those things. And so, and I, I was there the other day dropping off some food before her practice and I was watching the kids come out. And they all seemed, some of them forget that they're wearing their masks. They still come out. So they're all ready to do this too. I am just so impressed by what our staff did with this. And I think we even did one of the best jobs around the state after being in on a, on a conference that I was in. Virtual really had some issues. I heard quite a bit about it. In retrospect, we might have started a week later, but we'll get there. And we've hired a few extra people temporarily to be there and it's going to be just fine.
I'd also like to point out too that a lot of what the policy was came from the Casper Natrona County Health Department. However, with that said, how it was implemented and the logistics of it, the Natrona County School Board and its trustees, especially the current ones, have did an excellent job. And I agree, especially talking to two nephews, I know they definitely want to be back in school, willing to do whatever it needed to be or to be there. I also understand that that virtual learning, I think about 80 students before, now it's about 1,000. Yes, it's not, at least in my opinion. I don't like online learning, but that's okay. My wife doesn't either. I made her go online for when I was in school. She doesn't care for it, but, you know, everyone, every learner is different. The offerings could be expanded. I know it's limited with math, science, maybe even a couple PE classes. But, you know, as we, I guess, invest even in technology and the virtual learning program, even as a buffer for possible events, that can expand and grow.
Just wanted to quickly, before we go to the next question, be able to, to remind the audience that they certainly can develop questions on their own and just go and get the cards and give them to the timekeeper. We'd love to be able to ask what's on your mind as well. The next question, I think we're back to Ms. Alaby. And the question is, do you support statewide standards for school curricula?
Yes, I do. I support statewide standards because that's one way that I think creates accountability. A lot of parents and people sometimes want to know how their kids are doing and that's basically one of the only ways that it can be shown is through those tests.
I also support the statewide standards. I do very much believe in local control and I think that our schools are able to break down those standards and teach to the curriculum or create a curriculum that fit, best fits their school and also achieves everything that the standard requires. I think it's a good benchmark for comparing, and I know we all love to compare, comparing Casper to Gillette, Casper to Cheyenne, Casper Natrona to Kelly Walsh. Without those standards across the state, you're comparing apples to oranges. We don't know that our students are learning any more or any less. And I know that standards and standardized testings aren't always wonderful, but they do give us a benchmark to do those comparisons. So yes, I do support statewide standards.
I also support statewide standards and they're looked at every nine years for each area. Since we have school choice and things are done differently in a lot of different schools around the district, I'm glad that, that those teachers can teach the standards in their own way. But at the very, at the end of the day, everyone will have worked to meet the same standards, which is important.
Ditto. Yes, I also agree. I also feel and believe that having the flexibility within, especially the district, and how to implement that and making sure that students are receiving that education properly.
Well, this is going to be unanimous because I support statewide standards. The standards are what is to be taught in our district and our schools and our teachers determine the how, how it's taught. So that's when their, I guess, their personality or their strategies come forth and that's where you will see some differences in our school. What is to be taught will be the same. The how is determined by the individual schools, their philosophy and the teachers.
Next question, Mr. Cattler. What is your vision for improving school culture in terms of bullying, hazing and student safety? What is your understanding of any problems and their extent?
I believe that that falls largely on schools and on parents. You know, the board can create policies, but what, what it boils down to is effective management at the school level and then effective parental involvement. And I think that, that is unfortunately the answer to a lot of our problems is proper parental involvement. And what was the second part of the question? I'm sorry.
The second part is, what is your understanding of the problems and their extent?
I, you know, I know from my own personal experiences with the teachers that I know that any time we have bullying, it's, it's a big deal. But sometimes it can get blown out of proportion and what some people perceive as bullying is actually not necessarily bullying. So I know that some of those things, especially in the age of social media, a lot of times what is considered bullying gets blown out of proportion. But I, I still believe that teachers, parents and administration at the local level, at the school level are best suited to address bullying issues in the district.
I agree with Ray. I'm also on a committee called Climate Communication and Outreach. And it has to do with a three-tiered system of working with students and that includes behavior and it includes academics. And it has been kind of eye-opening to see some of the, the things that are happening in the district, but also the things you can do about them. So we've had some problems with bullying and, and as Ray said, we've written policies about it. We've even changed our discipline methods. So just so that they would be consistent throughout the district for certain infractions. But ultimately, I agree with Ray, it's up to parents. I mean, they have to explain to their children how to get along. And then the schools themselves can help the students as much as they possibly can.
And that multi-tier support system that you're referring to, I also, I know, is that a recent, is that this year?
Couple of years.
Couple of years? Okay. I'm still hoping that that is going to be something that will hopefully help with that. I know when I was in high school, which feels like forever ago now.
It was, no.
You know, maybe they didn't realize that we were being bullied and hopefully, you know, having just a conversation between the two and how we approach that might be one of those ways to create that culture of, hey, if you're actually, you know, expressing your feelings, which might be difficult for some of us, you know, hey, you know, he hurt me or however that might be. And I do know cyberbullying is a major thing. Whether it's their meaning to be harmful or trying to do something not very nice, I know that's another kind of development in that bullying stage. I know that by confronting, once again, having that conversation with the person, that, that kind of cyberbullying stopped. So hopefully we can continue with some sort of culture where we can get that stopped.
Well, well, to improve the culture, and I, I don't, I don't think these are trivial and we did put in policy. I think dress code helps improve the culture. When the students know, I entered this building and I'm no longer wearing my pajama pants or my slippers and attitude changes and I think it improves the culture. I also think our attendance policy works toward improving the culture, just emphasizing that we think attendance is important. And I think again, working with the community and our parents to ensure that literacy is a priority in our community. And I know we've worked on bullying and the big thing we had to do is give a definition to our students and staff and parents to understand what bullying is and what it isn't.
So out of my three children, I only have two that are actually in school and I have a first grader and a community learner. So my knowledge of bullying is, my son always tells me that the girls chase him around the playground and he hates it. I, I don't, we haven't quite got to the point where it might, you know, of the, of the things that we hear and, and the stories that are told on, you know, buses. I agree with Ray though. I think that because we're not in the school, especially because of our children, you know, we're not there all day, every day. It comes down to the school, how they tend to handle it between the, the teacher that does, you know, see it and then parents, absolutely parent involvement and making sure that if your child does say something, that you give them adequate tools to basically help them figure out how they can best solve the problem within those walls because that's where they are and we're not.
Okay, thank you. I think we are now to Ms. Howie for the next question. Okay, and this is an audience question. With the consolidation of older, smaller elementary schools, what options should be available to those parents who would prefer a small school experience?
I think that there are some of those in the larger schools. It's a matter of finding the right school and finding the right group for your children to be in. We had several grade schools that were very, that like, I can think of one that was used, was only a third full. And so it was costing us a lot of money. But inside the schools themselves, I think the groups can be divided enough that they wouldn't have to be so huge. And they could still get some personal attention.
So from my research and understanding, our average class size is about 18. So I guess I'd need a better definition of smaller. So if we're talking about like 10 or less, I'm uncertain about that. But there is also still, because it is K-12, our virtual learning program, that is also still an option as well. There probably is an option as well for being able to break into and have that, I imagine, the reason behind this question is to be able to have that one-on-one, to be able to say, hey, my child needs more help. Can you help them? And so I do understand that question. If that is the case, then maybe that's something that we need to look into. Hey, how can we have even within these class, within these schools, how to have a smaller, more tiny?
Then this is kind of a tough question because when we did consolidate, we did for efficiencies and we took the small school and they weren't, we couldn't run them sufficiently and cost-wise, so we consolidated them. We do have Midwest. Now, you know, we, we thought some people could go to Midwest that has a smaller population. We do have smaller class size. I think that's my Katie sitting over there. Maybe when she was at Crest Hill and I was teaching, we had, our classes were 20 or 25 when we were in first grade. And 18 is the max now. So we're trying that way, but I understand the whole school is still, whole school population is bigger. Tough question.
I agree. That is a really tough question, especially because I only know of the school, you know, that my children are at. I think this is one of the things that makes our school district so great that we have the open school district policy so that you can research. Because I do know that there are schools that offer programs where, like they were saying, they break into smaller groups or they have times where they'll take students and say, we'll take these five or six and put them in this group and these five or six and even pair them with older kids from the school and do programs with them also. So I think it's just about maybe finding a school within the district that might work well with that. And then also because we have the open school district policy, there are some larger schools, like she said, that still have smaller class sizes. My kids are bar none and I know that we're not at full capacity in any of my children's classes. So if you're ever looking, I'm a bar none.
Unfortunately, the smaller school model was a victim of recent budget cuts. And with Natrona County School District being a schools of choice district, the, the neighborhood school has gone by the wayside unfortunately. You know, we still have Poison Spider, we still have Woods, Midwest and the rural schools. So those options are still out there. We haven't gotten rid of them and I hope that we never do. But it's the, unfortunately, I think it's the times that we live in right now. I don't, I don't see Natrona County School District going back to a smaller school model just for the reasons that people have identified with efficiencies. You know, with every school, you have to have an administrator, you have to have the custodial staff, the administrative staff, counseling nurses and then all the teachers. And that's just, we learned when we closed those smaller schools down that there's millions of dollars in efficiencies every year that you can achieve by not having those schools and having the larger 4-3 and 3-2 school models. So there are options out there.
Okay, this next question is a combination of a submitted question and then two from the audience. We're going to get through here as best we can in a clear way. And this is for Mr. Meyer. With all of the potential budget cuts looming, what are your thoughts about eliminating school of choice and returning to neighborhood schools?
I would still stick with school of choice. Just for example, I imagine this question comes with, so with budget cuts with the busing system. So I know we used the hub and spoke. And with that, I know, for example, Cheyenne is not a school of choice and we have about the same budget for busing. So whether we go to that system or to keep with our system, that budget, for example, is going to stay the same. I guess school of choice has its advantages and disadvantages. I myself like to be able to choose the school I'd like to go to, especially with the DLI programs. I myself am a Spanish speaker. I spent two years in Monterrey, Mexico. And so the opportunity for my child to go and be immersed in the Spanish language is something awesome. And if you don't have that school of choice, it's kind of hard to be able to have that option if you're not within the region.
Well, I have always been an advocate for neighborhood school, but I've lost that battle. Because our community here in Natrona County likes school of choice and there are reasons they do. We do have an option that when you choose your school, that option is on your proximity to the school where you live. I think we lose community in that when we lose school of choice. But, but it's, I mean, school of choice is here to stay and it gives parents the opportunity to choose, find the school that fits their students' needs better. And so I'm sure that's, that's why we have it and with DLI, we do have that. And, you know, but with statewide standards, they just have to look at how these standards are approached when they choose their school of choice.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. It is, with all of the potential budget cuts looming, what are your thoughts about eliminating school of choice and returning to neighborhood schools?
Right. I, I wouldn't want to eliminate school of choice because I do think it's a wonderful option for the kids. Like they were saying, you get to choose a school basically that's based on what your child needs. But again, I don't, I don't know much about the, I don't know much about the budget because I don't, I don't know. But I would happily support whatever, whatever we decide would work best for that.
I don't believe that eliminating schools of choice would solve or really give us any true effect on the budget crisis. We do have a number of special programs in the district with the DLI program, the project-based learning, classical education, gifted and talented, as well as just the cultures that exist at the individual schools that don't necessarily have a special program. As I said previously, we're, we're not going to go back to the smaller model schools. You know, we're not going to see the 150 to 200 student schools anymore. The district's gotten rid of most of those buildings. So I think the neighborhood school for the kids that live over by the Fire Rock is Summit and those kids are not going to walk to Summit. Well, I guess maybe they could, but it's going to be a trek. The kids that live in Bar None, their neighborhood school is miles away because we don't have those smaller schools every, every few blocks anymore. I think if we were to attempt to eliminate schools of choice, I don't think it's a single-year process. I think it's a process that starts. Certainly starts.
Well, I'm with Trina. I have always been an advocate for neighborhood schools because it seems, it always bothered me that the kids didn't, couldn't play with their own friends in the neighborhood. That was one of the big things. And my kids were able to walk to school. I, I still question in my head that it isn't more expensive to bus kids around the neighborhood and I'm even aware of a couple of parents, or around the city. And I'm even aware of a couple of, of parents that I know of that put their child on the bus and let them be on that bus for a long day because they won't get home until a certain amount of time, which I think is awful. But on the other hand, I don't think the difference in the funding would be anything that would help that much as far as cutting. that would help that much as far as cutting the budget. And since seventy percent or more of the people in this town like it, I think there is.
Okay. And this is another audience submitted question, and I think it's to Ms. Walsh. In, and, of course, down the road. In these tight budget times, do you support the planned walkway connecting the Nautrona County High School main building to the MAC? And if so, are there other specific examples that are more a want, not a need in our district?
Well, well, to be real honest, you probably don't know, when the Nautrona County School District was going to pave for the walkway, I was one who was absolutely against it, and I voted not to do it. Now, we had people on the board who were very visionary, and they went out and they found that there was money in the contingency fund that wasn't spent when Nautrona County was built. That money can only be spent on Nautrona County and for nothing else, and they came back with that money, and then I voted in support of that. I, I just want to go back and circle back to the transportation and the bus. Should we lose busing to the, you know, schools of choice, then I think an option would be that the parents could still choose the school they wanted to go to, but they transport them.
I wouldn't have had much of an idea about the NC walkway, I've heard about it, I knew kids probably would love it, so I don't really have an answer in terms of, was the question a proposed, proposed budget cut? Or would I, will you repeat the question one more time, please?
Absolutely. In these tight budget times, do you support the planned walkway connecting the Nautrona County High School main building to the MAC? And if so, are there other specific examples that are a want, not a need?
I, I really appreciate what, what was said about, no, you probably don't support it at first, because it kind of seemed silly, but at the end of the day, if there's money set aside that needs to be spent on something only, and that's something that they deem necessary, or that is, is a good spot to spend it, then why not?
Okay, so it's my understanding that that bridge was always part of the plan for NC. Initially, I did not support it, I thought it was definitely more of a want than a need. And then we had a meeting at, in the MAC building, the accessory building to the side of NC, and as we were standing there waiting to get let into the building, there was forty to fifty kids standing outside at either one of the doors waiting to get in. We've had a huge emphasis on safety over the last few years, and as I was talking to trustee Jensen about this issue, they were just sitting ducks standing out there, they couldn't get in, they had no place to run in the case of a safety incident. So that, that is when I switched my support for the bridge. Truly, if we wanted to save money for the project, doing it as part of the pool project could have saved thirty to forty percent, but since we did it as two separate projects that cost significantly more, so I do support the bridge now, and I think that there are other ways than just looking at it as a want as opposed to a need.
I was also one that did not support the bridge, and it was primarily for the cost, and even though we've been really focused on safety, I didn't see where it was going to be that much better. When the state money turned up, then cost-wise, it was fine. Now I'm concerned, because it's an awfully tight space, and there are large windows, and I hope they're working on trying to, how do I put this, get, get the bottom built up a little bit, so that if kids had to duck, because there was somebody outside, that they could do that. And I think they're gonna probably have to put cameras in there, because if kids are going back and forth in there, and there are a lot of them there, anything could happen. So.
Ever since I heard, first heard about this bridge, I was all for it. One, the safety reason that I actually said was one of my priorities, was the safety of our kids. It is a busy street, I know they have to wait, and cars are coming, it just kind of bypasses that completely, and also second, with the rate it's at, it, by doing it now and not waiting, it saves us money. And half of these questions tonight have been about budget, and so, I mean, what more can you say? We are, sorry, now, we, the school board is currently saving money by doing that, and I have also been supportive of that.
Next question is for Kyla on the end. The district graduation rate goal is eighty-five percent by the 2019-2020 school year. What are innovative alternatives for at-risk learners who struggle with their traditional education style?
Gosh, I'm so sorry, I don't know much about this either. I think I, the pathways program, if I, if I know correctly, is a school that they had done for at-risk or kids, and I think that's a wonderful program, I get, I think that gives them an opportunity to be outside the traditional classroom, so I thought that was something that was fantastic. I support anything that helps, you know, all children are different, all children are gonna learn at different rates, different ways, in their own way, and I love that our district is willing to, in any way, try to basically work for those children, because ultimately, that's, that's our goal, is that we're here for the educational purposes of the students in this district.
Will you repeat the question?
Absolutely. The district graduation rate goal is eighty-five percent by the 2019-2020 school year. What are innovative alternatives for at-risk learners who struggle with a traditional education style?
So I think we got really close to that by the nineteen-twenty school year. I don't remember exactly what it was, but I think we were pretty darn close, which I think we're all pretty proud of. But like Kyla said, I, the, the PIC program, Roosevelt, and some of the other alternatives, and even the virtual program, I think those are going to be huge for some of those, some of those kiddos that have a hard time with the traditional process. I think our strategic plan has also identified some areas and some ways that we can help those students identify early on, that they might have a, a hard time graduating, and we've put some processes hopefully into place that will help them, starting from ninth grade all, all the way until their graduation, hopefully, that can help them identify what they need, what's going to help them get across that finish line. And so I think with those in place and some of those alternatives, I think that we're going to be able to achieve our, our new goal, which I don't remember what it is off the top of my head.
When I was at Keller Walsh, the last few years I was there, I was the at-risk coordinator, which meant I had a lot to do with at-risk students who were having a hard time getting through, and there were not a whole lot of things that could be done there at that time. And then, most recently, Roosevelt, which had been a school of choice, is now an alternative school, so, and it's a smaller school, so that students are having a really hard time, actually can be assigned there, and they do get very specific individual attention. And it's connected to the PIC, so they're close to the vocational classes that are there. We also have something called Transitions, and that's really one-on-one, and I guess you would count this one too, it's, it's, it's kind of like a suspension lab, but it's a place where kids are just flat having a hard time, and they, that, I believe, is over behind CCA, and they get part of that individualized attention too, so there's a lot available.
So I have two ideas, and, you know, I just like to have fun with it at work, when we have ideation sessions, there is no bad idea. So these might seem abstract, but there's two. So one, the Costello Adult Learning Center at Casper College. You have to be sixteen to attend, so for those that either don't like attending the high schools, for whatever reason, maybe that, that style of learning isn't for them, they offer high school equivalent C tests, and these degrees, or GEDs, whatever it might be. And I know that talking to them, for example, Melody Dawson, there have been students in the past that have taken this opportunity to use that. The other one would do kind of like a two-track system, one where students would take classes that would prepare them for college and beyond, so whether it's taking your math or basic things. And another track that would take them for, hey, I just want to go work after school, or, you know, whether they want to be a welder, carpenter, working construction, you know, maybe not having to take some of those math classes that, you know, believe it or not, math is hard, algebra in high school, I'm, 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 most of us didn't like very much, but, you know, that's some opportunities.
Thank you. Well, I believe currently our students need twenty-six and a half credits to graduate. Roosevelt, we did lower those, and I believe it's twenty, and those kids focus mainly on their core subjects, and they have fewer elective. So that's one way we're helping our students. Another, though, is for all of our graduates, beginning as a ninth grader, there's a graduate plan that each child has, each student has. That plan is monitored each semester, and is communicated with the parents and the students and the instructors, so that if they're falling behind, they have their plan that goes with them every year, and we can help them get where they need to be to graduate and get a graduation rate up.
I think this next question is for Mr. Kettleer. Sorry? Okay. I lose track sometimes. Classrooms look and function differently in the 21st century, and you can feel free to provide some of the ways in which you believe they look and function differently. What background and understanding of 21st century education would you bring to the school board?
Everyone's happy they're not.
Right. Congratulations. Boy, that is a great question. My understanding of 21st century classrooms, I've been in them, I've seen them, they are significantly different, but then there's a lot of things that are still the same. So, you know, kids are still collaborating together, even if they're behind a plexiglass shield, kids are still getting direct instruction from a, a person standing at the front of the room or intermingled with the kids. So I think a lot of the technology things have been a benefit, because you can jump on YouTube and show kids things that you would never have seen twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago, when I was in school. So that there's, there's a lot of great things that are happening right now, but then there's still a lot of just those basic things with just a good teacher and good rapport with the students that's happening in those classrooms. So I think that that is absolutely critical, because we can have all the technology and all the flashy things and all the bright lights, but it's not going to help students learn unless we have those good teachers and other good professionals in the classroom.
I was just thinking of my own area, because I was family in consumer sciences at Keller Walsh, and while I was there, we were trying to get a commercial kitchen, and it was piecemeal, and it was tiny, and we had a really hard time doing it. And the new kitchens in both of the large high schools are now commercial kitchens, and that's made a huge difference in the way you teach as well, because you teach food service instead of just cooking. That's one of the examples. So I think we've gone more to some vocational areas that will help people get jobs, that's one thing. The other thing is the technology. I got my master's degree in computers and education that I learned on an Apple IIe, and then I had to try and figure out a way to keep up the rest of the time. And what you have to do sometimes is take advantage of what the students know, because sometimes they know more than the teachers, at least in the beginning, maybe not now, not anymore. I think technology's important, but I think the relationships between teachers and students are the prime thing.
I still remember when Promethean boards came around, and they're like, do not write on this with a marker. And now even, so Casper College, just recently, I believe, has this fancy little duplicate where you plug in a computer, and it has a little screen on the bottom, projects it to the top, and you can just swipe it, and it's the coolest thing ever. So technology definitely helps, and, you know, one of the things that I've constantly been thinking about is kind of the hybrid model, of being able to do classes that pay once a week and then being able to do online, because we do have Zoom, and we have these other opportunities to share screens, they can share, you know, the YouTube videos, whoever they might want to be able to teach. And then, for example, it's easy enough to do this, because, you know, about half of my last semester in college, we were, I mean, it was all online, and I was learning how to code in R, and they were saying, hey, yeah, I could see everything, teacher was sharing a screen, it's wonderful, the things that we can do nowadays.
I'm glad I followed Tom, because I could just say ditto. Anyway, technology, even the COVID-19 that we're going through, is changing things rapidly, and I believe we're gonna see less, our students are going to spend less time in the brick and mortar or in the virtual, they'll have some time in that, that arena, and then they will be out in the community or the world. I really believe the 21st century classroom, our students are going to be in that classroom in less time.
So from my own personal experience with my, you know, small children, again, in school and having the technology, it has made it so fun for them to learn. They, they love to learn anyway, but this year they get computers, they get to come home, and they get to do a lot of things on the computer where everything is already downloaded. They talk about being in the classroom also with their teachers and how much their teachers have access to because of that technology in the classroom, and I think that's something that teachers love and appreciate, and I know that my kids love and appreciate that they have access to that. So I think the 21st classroom, like everyone else has said, is pretty fantastic, and I think we're not going back anytime soon, so it's just only up from here.
This is our final question for the evening. We thought we'd give some time for the audience to reach out to the candidates if they've got individual questions that we didn't cover. We'd just like your last question to be in any final thoughts of our topics that we did not cover.
Sorry, with Dana.
Okay. Oh, man. It's right up. We covered a lot of topics, and I think we covered all the major ones. One thing I would say is that things are constantly improving for students, and I want that to continue. I'm with Rita on making sure that the curriculum is as it should be for students, and at the same time, I want the graduation rate to come up, but I want every student to have a chance to do that. After eight years on the board, there are a lot of things that I'm, I'm still in the middle of working on. I'd still like to see, see a completely perfect climate for children and staff. I still think we have a ways to go in communication all the way through the district, that was one of my primary irritants at first, but, and that's something you always have to work on, but that's one of the things that I'm still planning on working on.
My final thoughts just include a reiteration of what I said at the beginning about the current board and those currently running, is that you have to be altruistic, in that if any policy that is made, any decision that is made, any group talk, discussion, is all for how can we help our teachers, how can we help our kids grow and learn, and we're not trying to be evil for some reason, or whatever. I just know that, you know, with this position, this is you are looking out for the kids and making sure what's best for them. Yes, we have different ideas, and that's what the beauty of it is, that diversity of thought, and being able to talk and have a conversation, but in the end, everyone's altruistic and has one goal, and that is to help the kids.
So, so your question was, did I think anything's lived out? Is that correct?
Final thoughts or any topics we did not cover that you'd like to cover?
Yeah, you know, I think we've covered things pretty thoroughly, and I just want to reiterate that how hard our staff is working and how important, and, and I understand that our teachers are feeling anxiety, they're still in the classroom, and they want to be there with the students. As a teacher myself for thirty-some years, that's why we did it, and we wanted to be there with the students. And we do have teachers feeling some anxiety today, and we just want them to know that we do appreciate what they're doing, and we care about them greatly.
As a first-time person running for school board, I think we covered a lot of great topics. I'm pretty happy that a lot of those questions I worked on, made sure I was ready to answer them. So there aren't any other topics. One thing that I did want to reiterate also is I just want to hope that I can always remember, you know, I know other school board members and, you know, parents and families and teachers, that ultimately, we're here for the, you know, again, the educational needs of the children, and I'm excited to be a part of that.
So I'm not naturally an optimist, I'm not necessarily a pessimist either, I think I'm more of a realist, but after listening to everyone's answers tonight, I am excited for the future of this board. I think that education in Nautrona County, there's, and I, it's not necessarily always a benefit, but I think there are a lot of people on this board that are like-minded, there's nobody that thinks that everything needs to be blown up and started over, so I think that is an advantage for this district. I think that is an advantage for this district. I'd like to thank the Nautrona County Library and the League of Women Voters for putting this on and inviting us all here. I'd also like to thank Kevin Christopherson for everything that he's done over his term on the board. I know that he sometimes gets a bad rap for some of the things that he says, but his heart has always been in the right place, and he's always, he's probably been one of the best board members to work with. So he's here tonight. So thank you, Kevin, and that was all I have.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I did want to thank you for your time tonight, for coming here. You know, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt said, "Democracy cannot succeed unless those who express their choice are prepared to choose wisely." The real safeguard of democracy, therefore, is education. And I think that as individuals on the school board, yours is a sacred trust to make sure that we have a democratic society, one that has students as they grow, be prepared to participate in that democracy. So thank you for your willingness to be a candidate for the school board. We certainly wish you the best of luck in November and, as well. Thank you to those audience members and those who are viewing it. Your ability to come and the time that you're taking, the education that you're getting, and hopefully, the interaction that you'll have with the candidates do help you choose wisely. So we encourage you to share what you've learned tonight with those in your circles, and encourage everyone to get out and vote in whatever way they choose to do so. And we're thankful that you're here tonight, and wish you a good evening as well. We'd certainly encourage candidates and audience members to, if you would like to engage in dialogue with individual candidates or ask them follow-up questions, certainly, we'd encourage candidates to make themselves available, and wish you a good evening. Thank you so much. Yeah, one, one quick announcement. Next week, we have another exciting candidate forum, and that is next Tuesday night at six-thirty.
Thursday.
Next Thursday night, excuse me, October eighth, in this room, for the, the city council candidate forum as well. So please try to make that as well, that's gonna be a good forum. Thank you.